Put the deal to the black of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
What call do you want to respond?
Trusty Charlie, bestie presenta.
Here.
Bestie probably with screen, bestie here, here.
Here.
You must have approved in minutes previous meeting, June 11th, 2012.
So long.
For a second. Do you discussion? On the second page. First full paragraph, codes officer, codes officer K. Grill. Go down. One, two, three, four, fifth sentence down from the top. We can change the word need. To net. Net with some context for finding matches.
Say, you want me to write paper?
Yep. Second page five. Five sentences down from there. Where it says need. Change that word need to net. Anything else in the minutes? Any other discussion? That was the favor of approving minutes of June 11th, 2012. Send the five saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious. Presentation petitions, communications, notices, general question period. Where was the community? Thanks, Eric. Eric called me this morning and I asked if he could come and give us a little bit more insight on the bike trail. Thank you for coming.
No problem. Let me just start by saying this part of the equation. I really believe in cases like this. I mean, everybody knows what we're facing up here in Inori-Ture. I just attended a Pfizer meeting and things don't look good. I mean, it's, it's, but we have a couple of options. The one option is to hunker down and try to be in a situation where we pinch every penny and hope that we'll get some sort of economic opportunity. The other thing we have is an opportunity to try and move forward. And this is the way I see the equation. Now, this is something for debate. What we have up here is a beautiful community and we have amenities that we can add to. We're trying to get people to come here and live and buy homes here. That's the goal. How do you do that? You do it with schools, okay? Okay, I, that was not meant to be a joke, but I understand that that dynamic is, but that's one way you do it. Another way you do it is with recreation. You try to foster tourism. You try to do the kinds of things that get people when they come up here, especially people who work at the border, and say, this is, I, you know, I may have to drive to Plattsburgh to go to a movie, but I, I would prefer to live in one of the communities up here. As I see this and have, this is something that's been on my mind, as many of you know, for 16 years now, is to try, try and connect the communities with some kind of recreation trail. We have an opportunity here, in my opinion, to move forward with the county's not only support, but the county under the shared services agreements that you guys have homogated over the last few years, where they do all of your paving and so on, for the county to really do a lion's share of this position. Okay. Fast forward, where are we right now? This is the proposed path. I was unsuccessful, no matter what people think of putting that up. That's the new area. I was unsuccessful at trying to make this into a Rutland Railroad Trail there. So what we have here is a hybrid. And the amount of money that we're looking for, and we're going to phase this in over at least two phases, hopefully three if we get the grant, is to run it from the railroad in Rouse's Point right over here to Prospect. That's the goal, with the connectivity factor being at the middle high school. Now, when I first did this and approached people in Champlain 16 years ago, I got some positive feedback. The bank, and there were others along the way. The school then, of course, owned the elementary school, and so they, they were looking at it positively. The Development Corporation now owns a vast portion of that, and we looked at that and we thought there would be a way to actually save money and put, and sort of strike off an area in the back because they've actually, you know, gone right over the old Rutland Railroad bed. But in any event, what we're going to go for in Phase One is running it from Rouse's Point to the Hayford Road. The costs aren't in yet on that, but we're, we're in a position where we're saying between $300 and $350,000. Now, where does that money come from? It comes from labor and materials. Where does the labor and materials come from? Mostly from the county under the shared services agreement. This is an opportunity that I don't think is going to come again for any of the three communities. But when you apply for these grants, if one community, Town of Champlain has already signed on to this, with one community, you receive a certain number of points. With two communities, you receive more. And the whole idea would be to get letters of support from all three communities. Now, is it better if the letter includes, I'll use the vernacular, skin in the game? Yeah, it is. And the towns has a $5,000 component to it, which can be paid lump sum or over a couple of years, and in-kind services. The same thing I'm going to pitch tomorrow night, again, in Rouse's Point. For you guys, it's a little bit different. I brought two resolutions tonight. I brought one that has that commitment, which would only be applicable, A, if we got the grant. This does not bind you to anything until we get the grant and you actually sign the papers, and B, it would not be applicable to Champlain at all until that phase was built. If I had to guess, if we get the grant, Phase One, running from the railroad bed up through the Hayford Road, we build next May and June. We'll then reapply again for the next phase. Hopefully, that'll bring us to Champlain, but I can't know that either. In each case along the way, the county is going to be our partner in this. The county under shared services, the same things that you do now, where they're doing your paving for you. I think they were in town today, right?
Right.
And so on. It's a, this is an incredible deal. And all I can tell you is that I think if we can, the three communities, I know you're working on the same concept with water and sewer, with Rouse's Point and the Town of Champlain and the village. This is our future up here. Our future is doing things together. It's not doing things individually. And that's the way we're going to survive. So, I'd be happy answering questions for you. All I can tell you is that in Rouse's Point, which will be the, the first part of this equation, we met today and walked the whole area from the railroad bed up to the town line, and at this point, the most Rouse's Point is going to have to throw in is maybe a couple of flagmen to, as the county does, does the work. And the same thing with the town. Now, will there be maybe some hauling of materials? There might be. But there's hauling of materials now. That's part of the shared services agreement. This is not going to break anybody's budget at all. And for $5,000, I mean, if you end up with a recreation trail that runs from Rouse's Point to the middle high school and to the Village of Champlain, which could run in the upper eight, $900,000 before you're done, and you can get that for $5,000, I think it's a bargain. I fully understand if Champlain is in a position because you're not in Phase One. That's why I brought two different copies of a resolution of support. One has the $5,000 figure plus some in-kind services. The other one has just the letter of support. If you can't, you can't. I mean, I don't know what, but all I can tell you is that in terms of point values for scoring of grants, if you have skin in the game, if you are willing to say, we're willing to support this project and we're willing to do some things to support this project, more than just write the letter, it will be scored higher. Whether that's a make or break deal, I have no idea. The key to this grant, this is a, you know, Parks and Rec grant, the key to this grant is going to be how many other people apply and how the grants look. Our grant is done. With the exceptional letters of support, it's done. It's ready to go. It will be submitted this Friday, hopefully with all three letters of support from all three communities. If it doesn't go the first time around, we may resubmit next year. We'll find out what's wrong with it. If it does go, if we get Phase One completed, it's my opinion that then we're on a track to get the rest of it done. They're not just going to build this thing from Rouse's Point to the Hayford Road. They're going to continue a process. And that's the point where, you know, we're in a situation where we will be back to the Village of Champlain again, because then it will look even more certain that we'll be needing those funds. What are those funds going to go for? Potential architectural design. Potential in-kind services that the county doesn't have. I can't think of any offhand, but maybe there are some. As Al Rasko said, you know, to Brian Pelkey today, possibly some hauling, possibly some flagmen and so on. Nothing that's going to, in my opinion, have any impact at all on projects that you have already planned in the Village of Champlain. And this would be a minimum, that we're talking about the earliest 2013. I think that's for Phase One. Phase Two would be 2014, 2015. The bottom line is, people, you know, I can't tell you if more people will come and live here. I can't guarantee that. But it's quality of life. It's what's available. And recreation right now is in. It's an in thing to be able to provide for your citizens someplace that you can walk, jog, bike, observe, and, and the only other factor, and I know we talked about this before, but the only other factor that I see, and when this started in my mind, when I first started teaching up here in the 1960s, were kids riding their bikes on that Prospect Hill Road from Rouse's Point and from Champlain to the high school in May and June and thinking, oh my God, we have a disaster waiting to happen here. So you have, in my opinion, a public safety issue too. This will be three feet, it'll, if you look at the map, it will be three feet off of the road. It'll be a 10-foot strip going both ways, going, and, you know, it'll be a non-motorized. I think we need to, one of the issues we came up with that ended up sinking the project in terms of the old Rutland Railroad bed was the factor of, you know, trying to amalgamate motorized vehicles and drivers. That doesn't work. You know, it can't work. You need, you need two separate trails for that. So, in any event, that's where we are. I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of you have about this. Again, I have two copies of potential resolutions. And I didn't make extra comments. Let everybody know. I don't want to do that, but that's, anyway. And... Okay. So are there any, any questions that I can answer about this in terms of, go ahead.
Have you got cleared right away on all missengers that obstruction is out of the way? I mean, who owns the property that this is going to go on?
In terms, which Phase One?
Straight across.
Well, we don't...
Just gotten the approval on Phase One.
That's right. We have, we have Phase One all taken care of. That's all we have done. We have sent out letters to other people potentially, and heard back from some of them, some of them positive, some of them negative. Mostly, we were working with the railroad bed and, you know, frankly, you know, there are individuals who believe that children, let's just take kids as an example, they firmly believe in, I can't argue against this, that going on the railroad bed, the kids disappear from view. The kids are in the mid, you know, they're in the middle of the field. They don't like that. And, and I guess I can understand that. So there's, there's a fear on that opposite side. All we have in place now are rights of way, mostly from the village and the town, because they get, they have a, in the case of the village, on Chapman Street, for example, they have a 60-foot right of way, 30 feet from the middle of the road to either side. So that completely covers that entire area.
What kind of safety precautions are going to be put in place for these blind spots?
Wars.
When they're off in the field?
There isn't any blind spots.
No? You can see this, the...
There aren't any because we're not...
Halfway open?
Yeah, we're not on, we're just on the south side of Prospect Hill Road.
Okay.
So we're not, we're not anywhere where they can't be seen. Now, if we end up running this along the railroad bed from the, in the back of the high school down through into the Village of Champlain, I haven't walked that part, so I don't know. I mean, I can tell you, obviously, the area is behind the bank, behind the auto dealer, where the Development Corporation is and so on. Some of those areas are more open than others.
As I look at this area, we can, over a period of time, we could, we could break this $5,000 up and make two or three different budgets here.
Absolutely. Yours, while you, it probably won't be in the 2013 budget, maybe in the 2014 budget, but the answer is yes, over, over a number of budgets.
Just around the double.
Right.
You're reading four, is that five?
The one in Rouse's Point, yes.
Full step up.
Yes. And I'll be making exactly, if there's a camera going, this is going to sound so redundant, but it, you know, I'll be making the same pitch to them. I've actually pitched it a couple of times individually to them because in this equation, because they're up first, their support is obviously one of the most critical pieces.
Has their board passed this resolution?
They, they have not passed anything yet. That's the purpose of the need. They, this was sent to them as it was to you in May, and at this point, Rouse's Point, if you have read the paper at all, you know that Rouse's Point is going through a contraction in terms of their overall view, probably because of Pfizer, because of potential water and sewer rates and all those other things. So this isn't the best timing for Rouse's Point. I mean, I think that's fair to say. But there's never a good time. And if I was coming to each board and saying, look, you're going to have to come up with $100,000 in in-kind services, I wouldn't be making that pitch now. But that's not the case here. This is a golden opportunity under the shared services agreement to get outside support for a project that I think is going to benefit this entire region. I cannot know what the likelihood is. People are telling me it's about 50/50 that we'll get the grant. So we'll see what happens. We should know within a few weeks, much like maybe, you know, some of the things that you're submitting relative to, you know, it goes first to the council and then we'll see what happens to it. But this does not need the economic component to it that some other, this doesn't have to be, you know, doesn't have to create a whole bunch of jobs and so on. This is a, this is a quality of life issue. It's evaluated a little bit differently than others. But I just think it's, it's, now is the time to be proactive in our community, especially with the opportunity we have to get something with, in my opinion, a minimal amount of impact. So, other questions? I saw a hand here.
Is the $5,000 in kind or cash plus in kind?
It is, it is a commitment for both. It is a commitment for $5,000 if we need it, and also potential in kind, but you need to know the job is going to be done by the county under shared services. It'll be ancillary at best. It's not as if we're asking you to spend money on blacktop or asking you to spend money striping lines or asking you to do a lot of, or do groundwork or, you know, those kinds of things. All of that is going to be done by the county.
This to me, the $5,000 is like any other grant that we applied for. It just shows that we are involved.
Exactly.
It shows that we go along with what the whole program is.
It's skin in the game. And if, if, when we receive the grant for Phase Two or Three, depending on how we break down the next part, whatever that Champlain piece is, you will still have the option at that point of saying, well, you know, I mean, somebody's going to possibly stand up and say, well, you passed a resolution. But until you sign the papers accepting the grant, you're not fiscally committed to it. This is a show of support. This is what they measure when they look at and do the evaluation of these grants.
Who's responsible for the maintenance?
That's a good question, and I don't know that we're going to, it should be low maintenance anyway. A vast majority, this will be in the Town of Champlain. I don't, I, as I watched the snowplows last winter, the snow will be going right over that area. When, there will be signs up that there are no four-wheelers, but we're not going to worry about the issue of, you know, snowmobiles. I don't know whether those are things that, I mean, there'll be probably ballards at each place as you enter in Rouse's Point, designating where it is, probably a couple on the Hayford Road, then on the other side of the Hayford Road and coming up, and all along, there'll be ballards there. But I don't see much maintenance there. I mean, it may be that they'll have to be swept off in the spring. I don't know. But in terms of other communities that I contacted, very, very low maintenance.
All three of the entities have machinery to sweep the trails, so...
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't see this as an entry. So, I don't know. Are there other questions that I can answer?
Any other discussion? Are we comfortable with all of the other of these resolutions? We passed the first one here, we can always go back and pass the second one for the contribution of $5,000 in the future.
You can.
This is just showing support.
This is showing support. Yes, it is. It's showing support. I mean, if, if you're asking me, my preference would be, but again, it's relative to them looking at gauging the support of each of the three municipalities. The Town of Champlain and hopefully the Village of Rouse's Point tomorrow will be signing off on Option One. But they're involved in Option One. There's actually something that's going to be built in their municipality area. You are not. So it's really, it's a judgment call on your part based upon what the majority of you feel and what you're comfortable with. But either way, the, the letter of support should be in there, if you can do that.
So we support you and we support the finances. It doesn't mean that the finances have to be there, come down the road, obstacles are thrown in the way.
That's right. Until you, once the grant is, and you won't even be involved in that first phase. I mean, you won't even have to sign off on that first phase because that does not involve you. So it'll be 2013, 2014 before you are going to be asked to say, all right, here's the letter, now you need to sign the papers, accepting the grant, and then we'll go from there. And hopefully, the same deal will be available through the county that it is now. But I, I have a feeling that if this goes well, that the state's going to put up the money, the county's going to put up the labor and materials, and we've got a great marriage here. And I also think it goes a ways towards uniting the areas up here and getting them to see they can work together as three, not each one for themselves, but more of a broader view of the Town of Champlain, which is something I like about it.
That's certainly what we're finding with this water and wastewater project, is I can attest to the idea that all three entities are sitting at a table and finding, you know, some, some grounds that they can agree on and to go forward, much like this project. I think the water and wastewater project, if it's not accomplished now, it'll never go. I don't think we'll see it again in a long, long time. It's something that has to be, has to be accomplished in the near future. Any other discussion? Someone like to make a motion? Can you report?
I make the motion to show support as well as financial support for the bike trail.
Do you have a second? Let the board call, please.
Trusty Charlie, aye. Trusty presenta.
Aye.
Trusty, Eric, aye. Mayor Martin.
Aye. You will have that hand as far as I'm aware.
Okay, thank you. The only other thing, I, I just had one quickly. I always like to bring a little extra to, you know, I haven't been here in a few months. As you probably know, sales tax figures continue to grow, and, you know, I, I believe that, Pat, I know you guys are on a different schedule in the Town of Champlain, but we are looking at at least 5% to 10% over the way we're running for the first six months of the year. It's fantastic. And, you know, I know you, you were one of the municipalities who budgeted the exact figure that the county gave you. So hopefully, as you close out your books next fiscal year in April and you're doing the budget in March, you could be looking at a, a nice figure there too. But, you know, I know you're, you've been talking, Greg, about doing recreation too in the village here and having something for the people here. And, you know, that's what the town is hoping, that they have an area set aside out there for a rec park across the way from the school. But at this point, they have not done a lot in terms of grant seeking to get that. But again, it's quality of life. And we would be connecting with the rec trail, you know, rec parks too. We'd ultimately, we would hopefully strike this thing down to Rouse's Point, to the Town of Champlain, and then to the village. But timing is everything, and I think being proactive is, is everything to me, so...
Certainly true. Any other questions for you? Is Panera working out all right?
Is what?
Panera working out okay?
It is. So far, so good. I mean, I haven't, I haven't heard much, that the bottle of the last three months is still there, but it, hopefully, people did not lose any money. They certainly lost vacations and other things, but hopefully, they did not lose any.
We'll be fine, I assume.
Okay, I know.
Thanks, Eric. Eric, was your report from codes enforcement?
Well, it's been a fairly quiet month. I was gone a couple weeks, uh, months. Really, not much to report. The average complaints you gotta handle, things you have to deal with, two building permits, a couple of ditch projects, but not it, really.
Okay, I have a, I have a question for you. Can you get the second call?
No.
Okay, we're seeking quotes to get the, get the properties moved here in the village, as we discussed last. Minutes, I remember. We actually have to send the letters to the property owners to sign us there a year?
I take it that way.
Since the last one?
In my world, once we send one letter, they're on notice that they have to cut their drafts. I don't think we have to send letters every time the draft is to be cut.
Okay, well, I just, I want to make sure because we're going to go ahead and mow these properties. It's going to be quite expensive, but I just want to make sure that we're following the proper procedure.
To be safe, we probably could send out a follow-up letter saying that this is just going to take place. But we did send one last year.
Well, we sent one last year, then I think we're covered.
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. So, you know, just so the folks know that we're going to go in and we're going to cut it, and we're going to put it on the taxes.
I mean, I don't think this is something like a water sewer bill where they don't pay, they just put it under taxes. It's a local law.
Nine properties that we need to take here?
And there's no new ones from last year? They're all the same old?
I think it's the same old, same.
It's the same, it's the same.
I think it was nine properties and it wasn't $400. $25,000 with one bid. So we got another bid on it. We don't think, I don't think we need a board resolution for that. Okay, just so the board knows. Okay? Any questions for me? Okay, any questions for me?
Nine.
Nine? Any questions for me? Thanks, Mark. I'd like to say how surprised I am with the announcement that St. Mary's School will close. The school has been an important contributor to the village, or in the village, for generations, providing a solid educational experience for thousands of students. The school has always been an important part of the village of Champlain, and I, for one, would like to see the school find a way to stay open and continue to provide a positive education for future generations to come. I wish the school well in this endeavor to stay open for the students and for the community. I think that can be accomplished. Tom, Tom, Larry and I were given a tour of the Augsburg wastewater operation early last week. We were able to see the turbines in action at the plant. I was very impressed by the setup and the efficiency they provide. Four turbines were installed with one operating on a rotating basis. We would have two installed if we go this route, with one operating at a time and switching back and forth. The others, I'm sure, will add their thoughts to this experience and how they saw the operation of this wastewater plant. On a lighter note, we would like to try something new this year, a night of music at the River Street Park. Some community members felt it would be fun to get together and enjoy some musical presentations on a nice, warm, summer evening down by the river. Our first attempt at this type of experience will be July 29th, starting at 6:30 PM at the River Street Park. This will be free entertainment by local musicians volunteering their talents for the enjoyment of all attending. Anyone with musical talent who wishes to participate may call the village office at 298-4152, and we will contact you with further information. We already have two acts that have volunteered to participate in this. The microphone is open to all musical acts. Bring a folding chair or blanket and enjoy the music and conversation at this community event, July 29th, Sunday, 6:30 PM. The resurfacing of Church Street began today. Thanks to the village residents on Church Street for their patience with this project. I would like to thank Larry and his DPW crew for their efforts in getting the street ready to be repaved with the grinding and other necessary preparations. A reminder to those using this street, please follow the posted speed limit and drive carefully. I will ask local law enforcement agencies to increase their speed enforcement activities, much like we did on Elm Street, to maintain safety on Church Street. So please, slow down while traveling not only Church Street, but all village streets. The board has been copied with the village's accomplishments over the past year. This is sent to the controller's office, is that it? This is sent to the controller's office every year detailing the events completed over the past twelve months. As you see, much has been accomplished in our continuing attempt to make the village a great place to live as we head into the future. I think this board has accomplished a great deal over the last twelve months, and deserve a pat on the back.
Mayor Martin? I contacted our web person, she's supposed to put that on our website.
Okay, very good. The accomplishments will be on the website as well. It's listed as, the title is, is, is...
I believe it was Highlights.
Subsequent Events.
I think I had it as Highlights of 2011.
Okay, very good. Highlights of 2011. A lot of, a lot of information there. My final comments is on the community garden. If you have not had the chance to drive by and look at it, please do. It is in full bloom. We are harvesting crops, and it's, it's quite exciting, the amount of vegetables and plants that are being grown down there. I just, it's, I go down every night in water, and it's just amazing seeing how much is down there. It's, it's great, it's just great. Thank you. Trustee Trombley?
I wish to thank Larry and his crew for all the work that they've done on Church Street, and Larry, for your continued efforts of working so closely with the county to get all of these services done for us. It's, it's so appreciated by all of the, the village residents. And to the residents on Church Street for their patience, while there are some, some basic speed bumps if you're trying to turn onto Cedar Street or get into St. Mary's parking lot, but they've been very patient, and they shall reap the benefits of the beautiful new street very shortly. So thank you to you and your group. Also, I echo Mayor Martin's sentiments regarding the closure of St. Mary's Academy. It's a very sad day for the community. And that's all.
Thank you. Trustee Presidenta?
I'd also like to commend the project scheduling for Church Street repaving. It's great when the plans can come together and everything fall right through the timeline, from the milling to the prep work to the actual painting, a perfect little shell of time, and worked out very nicely, and for residents of Church Street. Also, on the side note, St. Mary's do wish the school and those involved the best would hope to see that something could be resolved. It is difficult times right now, and hopefully, that issue can get resolved in a, in a favorable manner.
Thank you. Trustee Gary?
I guess it wouldn't be appropriate if I didn't say something about St. Mary's. I, I want to thank the community for all the years of continual support. When we have knocked on your door, it's not been go away, or you don't answer, it's always been, what can we do to help? And it is a very sad day in Champlain to lose such a huge piece of our history. And if there was a miracle to happen, we would love it to happen. There does not seem to be any means of keeping this school open. So we will be exploring other avenues, so that the children in our community and our surrounding communities will continue to have options for their education. And once again, to all the businesses and the people in this community that have supported St. Mary's, thank you, it has been a pleasure and an honor serving you at St. Mary's.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you for all you've done at St. Mary's, so greatly appreciated. Other reports from the correspondent?
Everyone has their expense revenue reports at the beginning of the year. And we all contribute to Water and Sewer Billings. Water, fifty-four thousand, eight seventy-one, ninety-two. And sewer was ninety thousand, eight twenty-six, thirty-five.
Their budget projections are pretty, are pretty good.
Yes.
Any questions for the correspondent?
My question I had was on the beautification. What else has come out of, out of that, other than the flowers? Gotta find that star. Star somewhere.
Just beautification, third page, community, six oh five.
Just how the flowers were four hundred. I was just curious as to what the other was coming up. And I can't find it.
Eight-five-ten point four.
Thank you. You said, what's it? Little bit of a budget? Yeah. I don't know.
You got it all, Greg?
Yes. Oh, the banners.
The banners.
Yes, thank you.
The, the banners.
Yes.
Hard word to put in.
Yes, some of the dollars, yeah, hard word. Thank you.
Motion for the board?
So we're hoping, we have, we have additional, um, for light bills, our tax, Flint County Treasurer, seven seventy-two, twenty-six, which are our tax, um, bill. And the heavy cash, ten dollars and forty-seven cents, goes for water and ice that we bought for the bank today.
Tax bills that weren't paid, or?
No, that's our tax bill, it just went out.
Oh, 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 just from, got to know.
Does it prove that the...
It's worth eighteen hundred, twenty-nine dollars.
Nineteen hundred and forty-nine, ninety-two, for a total of sixteen thousand, two sixty-nine, twelve.
Make a motion with the additional invoices?
Yes. Okay, any discussion on the one? Notice, uh, the general fund cost of milling for last century here. Saved us quite a bit of money here. We're working a couple hours extra on that, saved us, like, close to two thousand here. Any other discussion? The board call, please?
Trustee Gary, or Trustee Mar, or, pick one. Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Presidenta? Trustee Gary? Aye. Mayor Martin?
Aye. Other report from the superintendent?
Uh, you all have a copy of the superintendent's log. I don't have to tell you what we're going to be doing for the next week. We're going to do that, and, and other stuff, fix up, uh, this two years, it's got to be repaired, be repaired. I'm working on, probably, some of the millings installed, from way back in that, back at the, back at the street fund. I'd like to thank Alan Mercini and his men for building and trucking Holland, the millings from Church Street and we build the proper thing to do right here, so everybody knows that. Everybody trying to work together. And we got lawns, we got a building. Probably get some side blocks and stuff. Tomorrow, we're going to be taping around the back of Warner Street, so if anybody's out the belt, I don't see it on there, I don't see it. We had, we had some traffic, it was pretty good, we kind of kept the road blocked off with this local traffic element. I am going to do a turnaround up at the end, ride a bike tomorrow and fix the bump on Elm Street. Both in there.
Mystery bump?
Mystery bump.
Hope it's a small bump, by the way, but it takes up that much. Any questions for Larry?
Larry?
Yes?
Um, were we able to find out anything about the stop sign that suddenly disappeared?
No.
Will we get a few signs to have a few spares on hand?
I do.
In case you don't know about this, I was, I came home one night last week, and the stop sign at the corner of Chestnut and Butternut was on, and one of the street signs. And I'm sure that the resident that lives across the street would not appreciate somebody driving into his house because the stop sign disappeared. So Larry, we called Larry at home, and he promptly found a stop sign for us and, and brought it back up on the street.
Big old ugly one.
Big old ugly one, but it's been stopped.
And I do have new stop signs, but that's what they want, that's what we're going to do.
And I don't have an issue with that. My concern was that somebody who doesn't know the area thinks that they're driving out straight and ends up in somebody's front lawn. But I would certainly like to find the person that stole the sign. It's just, it's, it's a cost to the village, it's a cost to the taxpayers, and more than anything, it is a severe safety hazard that could have very severe consequences.
I believe we still have an ongoing investigation with the state police.
Correct.
Looking at the loss of about a dozen of our street signs in the past. They are, if my understanding is correct, they are close to the district attorney moving ahead here a little bit, so we can hopefully bring someone or some persons to justice here, and maybe they will stop.
And I, I just, you know, you have to wonder, are they, are they really thinking of the consequences? I mean, you see things like this in the paper all the day, all the time, where kids have stolen a stop sign, and there's a head-on collision because people are going through and don't even know. Granted, we live, you know, in a, in a small area, and, you know, it's usually local traffic there, but not always. It is summertime, people are driving around, so.
It's a good thing.
But Larry was wonderful, he got up there, radioed out the stop sign up.
Here we go. All right, have the correspondence, please?
Correspondence from Moore's Elementary School thanking Mayor Martin for his participation near Career Fair on June eighth, 2012. Notes playing for True the Hero, DCO monthly outreach report, and memo from Deputy Kurt Barco regarding water and sewer adjustments for Justin Penn.
Any questions on the correspondence? Number four, I'm doing the new business side. Under rural business, no change in the district, quick. Okay? As we go ahead with this grant, if we can finally do something with this TSA here.
I do have one other thing that might go under rural business. We got our approvals from the fire station, from the back foot provider, all the engineering spent down, they spent all of it by Albany, Department of Health. Do you need a copy of that here? Of the, of the plans or the approval from the county?
We, we need a co, a copy of the plans for it. You got blueprints?
Yeah.
Yeah. Because the health department, no, we need all the numbers and stuff off.
We're going to put that out for bid, probably go to the next meeting to have that done.
Very good. In response to last month's meeting, we, at Code Force Manaus, the Pedro's request about diverting issue, and we talked a little bit about local law, and as we read this law, all burning is forbidden, prohibited within the village limits, and their request was to ask Mr. Marshall about the change. I talked to Dave about it, and the summary of local law procedure, and I can provide you with a copy of this if you like, is quite a long, drawn-out, time-consuming, expensive change in a local law. change in a local law. He recommended against it. He said that the village code was quite clear, you know, in prohibiting burning, and the other aspect of it is, how are you going to describe the size of a home campfire that is allowed? Is it 30 inches in diameter? Is it three feet high? Is it, you know, and the enforcement of such? Are you calling code enforcement at midnight to come address, or calling the fire department at midnight to come out and address a campfire in someone's backyard? It was his...it was his suggestion that we leave the local codes as they are and go from there, rather than go through the process and attempt, or not attempt, change the local code to include the campfires, small contained fires in the backyards. And I think as, if I remember our discussions correctly, this was the way that the board wanted to go. And I recommend it, but...
But there's actually no burning in the village, period.
No burning prohibited in the village.
So, you're also...you're including the little...
Yes.
The little burning touches. Yes. That includes the campfire we're cooking the hot dog with there.
Yes, over. Because if you're going to change the law, you have to provide a description for such.
Some people are under the impression that if you're cooking a hot dog over a five-foot campfire, you're cooking, you know, not in my world.
Well, I'm sure he can be okay with it. He has the fire zone. So, we're going to change this to...
I personally don't have a campfire in my backyard, but, you know, as you drive around the village, you do see people that have invested money in these things, that enjoy sitting out in the backyard with their kids in the evening, having one of these little contained things. I personally have no issues with it.
But I think what goes out is complaints.
Yes.
If someone next door down the street ever calls, it's a problem. Okay?
And I think complaints only come from the excessive, when they get so big that your house is filled with smoke.
Burning something rather than...
You have a lot of people with asthma now, and that generates a lot of complaints, any kind of burning. I run a position in the town where there is no law, and it's, you know, it's a lot. People aren't as close together as they are in the village.
Are you getting a lot this summer? I haven't seen a lot of burns.
I don't get a...I mean, I get some. I can't say I get a lot, but there's, you know, there's always...the minute someone smells smoke, usually there's a call, you know, you gotta call fire control, because we have bird poos in town. But in the village, I mean, you may be enjoying a fire in your backyard, but the smoke is going, like, fifty, a house, two houses away, and the person is asthmatic, you know, it's not pleasant.
Any other discussion here? All right, let's address correspondence number four, please.
My question on this is, if he wasn't there and it wasn't being used, then how is there water usage? How'd the meter pick up usage?
It wasn't, because I estimated it, because I didn't know he wasn't there.
Oh, okay.
So, I thought the meter was broke, so that's why, that's what happened.
Gotcha.
So, when the meter actually got read, it was the correct number, it was the basic point there.
Okay.
Because we have one now with a paper under our door, and we contacted the mayor at the office, because the meter was broke.
Okay, so I make a motion to refund the difference to Justin Patton, and only charge the service charge. So, we would be refunding $23.84 on the water component and $48 on the sewer component.
Superb amount, $64.50. You got the number or do you want...
No.
No, let's see, that's what we'd be... $84.11.7184.
$71.84. $71.84. Got a second, please?
A second. I think it'd be good to let the residents know that if they are going away on vacation or something, the village here doesn't know that they're not home.
Right.
Okay? Sometimes there's a car parked in the driveway, sometimes they leave the light on. If they're going on vacation for a month, just call the village, say, "I'm going to be gone for a month," so their bill's not going to be estimated. Because if it's just moved 1,000 gallons, and they usually use 8,000 gallons, we're not my unit, we don't know if they're home or not.
And follow up with a letter, not only a phone call, but always good to, you know, back it up. You know, everybody can get caught in the middle of doing something and miswriting something down.
Right, well, that's what happened. We talked about it, like, home rain, and didn't get written down, so.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
We should all been there, done that.
Do you need a roll call on this? Roll the night.
Yep.
Yes.
Trusty Tremblay?
Aye.
Trusty Zender?
Aye.
Trusty Geer?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Any other new business come before the board?
Any further information on this sewer? The time put in our box to look at?
We discussed that on the way to Augsburg. What I'd like to do with that, I think for a class break, is to have the presentation done with them and have them bring the information back to us.
Okay.
Rather than, you know, rather than go the presentation room. Is that agreeable? All right, any other business? Have a second?
Second.
All in figures, if you're saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, folks.
I didn't get a clip for my pool, and I know it was over this time because I was below half. I'm down to one tile away from my hole, and these are the highest water bills I've had. Can you check my...
We went, we went right, and it's a remote reader.
Sure.
We're going to reach a remote.
What do you want?